Could all of you please silence your phones before we get started? Okay, the time is six to ten P.M. It is March twenty ninth. I would like to call this meeting to order. It's a special workshop meeting for the Village Board of Trustees. If you could all please rise for the pledge. Mayor Dan Mikeback present. Deputy Mayor Alicia Satori present. Trustee Matthew Hartthaw present. Trustee Lori Kerr, with Athens. Trustee David Sherman.
Present.
Clerk Treasurer Kelly Keller present. And we also have representatives from the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office here with us also this evening. Before anybody leaves, if you haven't signed in, if you could please sign in if you haven't done that. And then, welcome, Dutchess County Sheriff's Department. You're on.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kirk McFarady. I'm the sheriff of Dutchess County. With me tonight, I have Chief Deputy Jason Mark, Lieutenant Sean Spandau, and Sergeant Steve here. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you. A little bit about me, I'm in my thirtieth year with the Sheriff's Office. The past fourteen years, I've been the undersheriff where I ran day-to-day operations for the Sheriff's Office. And now the past six months as sheriff through the passing of Butch Anderson, six months of his tenure. So, he was a great man, legend. Really taught us how to get into modern policing when he became sheriff twenty-two years ago. What we do at the Sheriff's Office, we work well with each and every law enforcement agency. In Dutchess County, we work well with Village of Milton-David. We were asked to come and give a presentation on the services of the Sheriff's Office and what services we provide and what we do. As you're aware, or you may not be aware of, our department is four hundred and fifty large. That includes our Corrections Division as well as our Road Control Division and Civilian Staff. We have a fifty-five million dollar budget which I'm responsible for. Been responsible for for the last fourteen and a half years. Things go well, things go bad, and you have to address those issues. But knock on wood, for under nineteen years, we've been on the level. And been responsible for serving residents in Dutchess County. We handle about fifty-five thousand complaints a year responding for service. Dutchess County is split up into eight zones. This area is our Zone Six area, which has handling fine planes, the town of Northeast, Millerton, and Amene. We cover that zone twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week with one car. We come up into this area on a regular basis. Sergeant Hare lives up in this area, Deputy K, Brian K, lives in this area. So we have, we assign people out to the areas that live in the community and have the best interest in the community. With all of our deputy sheriffs, all of our deputy sheriffs must be Dutchess County residents. Whether you're full-time or part-time. On the road patrol side, we have a hundred and nine full-time sworn members, adding another ten this year. So we'll have another hundred and eighteen sworn members. We have five administrative staff, which includes itself, a sheriff, chief deputy, colonel, and captain. And then we have twenty civilian staff members. We operate efficiently and effectively, and we have a police modernization reform plan that we abide by. We were the lead law enforcement agency in Dutchess County. When police modernization reform came about, we were asked to help out all the local law enforcement agencies in Dutchess County. With simple tasks of looking at their policies and procedures, seeing if they were up to date. Would their use of force policies, with any policy, regular policies, under arrest procedures, obtaining individuals, et cetera. We worked well with the Village of Milton-David, and they were up to par. Chief Mark was the individual that worked with all the local law enforcement agencies to make sure they were up to par. Some were not, we helped them. We weren't there to say, "This is what we must do." We gave them templates of different forms to use and different ideas that we use and what we do. Because we're an accredited agency, we have different files that we have to be applied to and we have to be in compliance with each and every year. Every five years, and knock on wood, we've always been re-accredited. We're accredited in law enforcement division, road patrol division, as well as our civil division and our corrections division. There are sixty-two sheriff's offices in New York State, and we're one of about a dozen that are accredited in all three areas. So that's a great feather in our cap. As I said, with Sheriff Anderson, he was a trailblazer because he wanted us to be accredited. So we've been accredited since nineteen ninety-seven. In road patrol division, and then in the civil division around two thousand. And then our corrections division in two thousand and one, two thousand and two. So we maintain those accreditations, and that just gives, we're held to a higher standard. There are different standards that we have to meet. We have to have different policies and procedures that we have to abide by with, whether it's use of force, arrest procedures, or social media policy, policies for our employees that we work with. That's what they have to conduct themselves in a professional manner. We have an Internal Affairs Bureau. We're the only local law enforcement agency in Dutchess County besides the New York State Police. We're the only local law enforcement agency that has an Internal Affairs Bureau. Because we're four hundred and fifty sworn, we needed to do this. Because of social media and everybody being on social media and putting things out there, we had to put forth the social media policy, develop an Internal Affairs Bureau. So we were transparent with the public. And when somebody made a complaint about a deputy, which are few and far between, when somebody makes a complaint, we investigate that thoroughly. We also have, you might have access to this on our website. You have access to fill out a compliment or complaint form on our website. And then we just implemented with our police modernization reform plan when a deputy is out on the road, and they're asked for a business card, a business card with their name is on it, plus a tip line on the back, which you can send a compliment or a complaint with. So to further explain our police modernization reform, if you have Chief Deputy Mark say if you want to.
Thank you, Sheriff. I think we're done. I think you cut. As the sheriff said, my name's Jason Mark, I'm the chief deputy in the Sheriff's Office. And it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you for having us. And as the sheriff also said, in twenty twenty, June of twenty twenty, the governor signed Executive Order Two Zero Three, which mandated all local agencies to develop a police modernization plan and reform. We did that. We were, as the sheriff said, way ahead of the curve in terms of our accreditation from nineteen ninety-seven. So a lot of things were in place that we had to do for this reform and modernization plan. I want to thank Mike Peter. During the process, we were asked to assess every agency in Dutchess County's use of force policy. And Mike did a great job getting that to us. And it's a little bit tough when we're in a place where we're offering recommendations for things. We're not telling people, "You gotta do this," but these are the best practices. And Village of Milton's policies were in pretty good shape. There are a couple tweaks here and there to meet the accreditation standard and the NPTC, a best practices standard. But we appreciate the back-and-forth we had and the great job of that. So just to back up a little bit and to give you a full idea of what we do at the Sheriff's Office and who we are. When we were looking at our police modernization plan, the first thing we wanted to do was look at our mission statement. You know, the bedrock, the base that we would branch things off of. In looking at that, we wanted to do two things. One was to kind of bookend it a little bit with Sheriff Anderson, his mantra of treat people the way you want to be treated. And up then, under Sheriff McFarady, now Sheriff McFarady's mantra of get better every day. Be better today than you were yesterday, be better tomorrow than you were today. So I just want to read, if I may, I'll take a moment, our mission statement, and that's where we start from. So the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office, as part of and empowered by the community, and in order to attain and preserve public confidence, is committed to the mission of protecting lives, property, and the rights of all people to maintain order, to enforce the law, and partially to uphold the Constitution of the state of New York and the Constitution of the United States of America. To fulfill our mission, we will serve in close partnership with the community and will always strive to attain the highest degree of ethical behavior and professional conduct. The members and employees of the Sheriff's Office will provide fair and equal service to all members of the community and will work in close collaboration with other law enforcement agencies and community groups in order to promote public confidence and understanding of our mission. All members and employees of the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office will commit to improving every day, will treat people with the utmost respect in accordance with the mantra of treat people the way you would want to be treated, and will encourage our community partners to strive to achieve the same standard. Another piece of our police reform and modernization plan, the sheriff, I want to make sure we embrace all the members and everybody, is a triad approach, which he speaks a lot about. That is the community, government, and law enforcement working together towards our goals. If we can't accomplish this by ourselves, we need everybody pulling together. And again, as the sheriff had mentioned, in nineteen ninety-seven, we were accredited. We've been continuously accredited since nineteen ninety-seven. The importance of that is that every year, we have to complete a compliance survey. Every five years, we have an onsite visit. That's coming up in June of twenty-three, actually two months prior to that, where the assessors from Division of Criminal Justice Services will come down, spend three days with us, go through the cars, talk to them, and interview all the members of the department, and make sure that our policies and procedures are in order and we're following those. They have a hundred prescribed policies and procedures that we have to make sure we're following. And that's what they do. So that's coming up. But to do that, we have to make sure, and this year, we're signing on Lexipol. We're in that process now to make sure it's a prescribed way of all our policies. The training that goes out from that is an incredibly important part. Lieutenant Spandau is the director of our training bureau. We train every month, within-service training on a variety of topics. We train every month with firearms. We train every month with refreshers on different items. And it's so important. You know, it's one of the things the sheriff came from training and understands the importance of being forward-thinking to make sure we're on the cutting edge of that. It's important that we stay current. We have our, we're getting body worn cameras and as part of a package that we have been looking for for a couple of years. It's going to go in place this year, I believe, part of the long-term project. But that goes to our accountability with our Internal Affairs Bureau, which we started in twenty seventeen, to assure that if there's any issues, we can address them and correct them. The important thing, and again, as the sheriff said, our cooperation and collaboration with the agencies has always been important. And we want to continue to do that and maintain our ties in the community. Sheriff Anderson had always stressed, get out of your cars, be a part of your community. Every deputy sheriff in Dutchess County is a resident in Dutchess County. We try to have those folks assigned to the areas that they're familiar with. Sometimes it's prom. I know when I was working on midnights and I was in Hyde Park, and I was at the drive-in, and I kind of looked back and three rows behind me was the domestic that I had been to earlier, two days prior. So it gets a little touchy every now and then, but it's important. You're part of your baseball team, and your kids' little league, and church groups, and all those things. So we encourage, and I know Sergeant Hare is heavily involved with his community, and we want to get all our men and women out there. Thanks.
Thanks, Chief. Just to expand upon that, you know, it's very important, though, with the Sheriff's Office, always worked and always had a sense of community. As I stated earlier, all of our deputy sheriffs have to be residents of Dutchess County. We want you invested in the community. We want you to get out of your cars. We want you to talk to your local business people. We want you to coach. We want you to be part of your churches and your civic organizations. Be very involved in the community, so we have the best of interests. It also helps bridge that gap between the community and law enforcement. We just sent two deputy sheriffs to a police youth initiative. They just graduated from this course this past week. They had a nice ceremony, and we're going to take that around the county. They focused on the city of Poughkeepsie to start with. And it was a program that expands upon our school resource officer program as we have deputy sheriffs assigned to the different school districts. We have one deputy assigned to the Wibata High School here, out in this area of the Harlem Valley, as well as Dover Plains and Pauling. So we have two school resource officers in Pauling, one at the elementary school, one at the middle school and high school, and then one SRO in Dover at the middle school and high school, and then one SRO here in Wibata. Always want to be involved with the community, always want to be open to the children so they feel comfortable approaching the law enforcement and talking to us. Talking to us. We're a resource to the community. We're here to help people. When we interview people and we want to hire people, we ask them, "Why do you want to get into law enforcement? Why do you want to be a police officer?" "I got into this job thirty years ago because I want to help people." I don't care, and Sheriff Anderson and I always got along very well because we had the same philosophy. I don't care how many people you arrest, I don't care how many tickets you write. It's all about helping your people, helping people and keeping your community safe and protecting life and property. Never forget where you came from. I'll never forget what it's like to be a kid and make mistakes. I'll never forget what it was like to mess up. We in law enforcement, we have the ultimate tool in our toolbox, discretion. We don't have to arrest anyone. You know who's sound, you know who you can help, and you take a chance on some people sometimes to help them as well and get them the help that they need. If you ultimately have to arrest an individual, yes, that's what we do. But our job is to help people and be there for people. And that's what we want to continue to stress. We work with other local municipalities, and they offer supplemental, they ask for supplemental patrols. Village of Pauling, as well as the town of Waperters, as I mentioned, all our school districts. We're nine, nine different schools this evening? Nine different school districts and school resource officers. So they're contracted supplemental services. It can range anywhere from an hour, we bring in twenty-five dollars, to a senior member working, which is twenty-five dollars an hour, to a senior member working, that's eighty-five dollars an hour. What we do with these is we work with the municipality. They ask for specific hours they want us to work, and we do that. We also have, let's call it a checklist for, like, when we work the town of Waperters for patrol. They ask specific parks and areas that they want us to check during the patrol. The same thing with the Village of Pauling. And now the town of Pauling is working with the village to expand that patrol area as well. So you come to us, you ask us what you want done, what you want us to look at. If there are parking issues, if there are traffic issues, you want certain enforcements during the holiday months or the weekends, when the nicer weather, like, we had a pancake breakfast up here on Sunday, and I'm coming down through the village with my family, and it was rather busy on a Sunday morning and afternoon. So different issues that arise that you want us to look into. And we would look into that, whether it be parking issues or traffic issues, things like that. When you get the Sheriff's Office, you get the entire Sheriff's Office. So the perfect example is Village of Pauling years ago had a crime that occurred. The Village of Pauling car pulled up for that nine-year-old woman, got the girl. It ended up being a rape of an individual, and the male individual that committed the crime fled on foot, and we had about thirty-five deputy sheriffs, detectives, the sheriff and myself out at that scene. What it cost the Village of Pauling for that scene was one four-hour shift of a deputy sheriff that got the nine-year-old woman. So my point is, is you get all our resources with the Sheriff's Office. You get our detectives division, you get our crime scene technicians, you get our action recon structures, you get ATV patrol, you get white patrol. You get all these different things that are at no additional cost when a major crime occurs. So we work well with everybody. As we said, we're a large department, we're community-based, very community-involved. We want to help people.
All right. I'd like to open it up. Questions from board members first. Dave?
I have one question to ask regarding the Sheriff's Office as far as increasing the police presence with additional cars, officers on duty in the Harlem Valley, particularly, you know, covered in Milton and the Northeast, and also particularly at night, without necessarily having to be in the situation of the town or the village having to pay for additional service.
Could you speak up, Dave? It's hard to hear you in the back.
Yeah, we can.
Give it in the front.
To me, I'm sounding like I'm too loud. Sorry.
Nelt it out there.
Yes. Shall I start from the top?
Yeah.
I'm asking the Sheriff's Office and the sheriff if they could increase their police presence with additional cars and officers on duty in Harlem Valley, including Milton and Northeast, and particularly in nighttime hours, where that additional service might be able to be provided to us outside of the Village of Milton or the town of Northeast having to pay for additional protection services.
So we have a substation in Amene that we turn cars out of. So there was a substation up here that we would assign patrols to and have people turn out of the substation. So you would always have a vehicle presence and then various shifts. As I said, we have Sergeant Hare that lives in the area, and Deputy Brian K that lives in the area. That, you know, we would have different deputies that live in this area, whether it's Pine Plains, Northeast, Milton, that we would have them report out of the substation.
Would it then be possible, if there was a substation here, that you could do that? What would we have to do with you to make that happen?
We would have to work with the county Department of Public Works and the county executive's office and my office to arrange a contract with the substation.
Is that twenty-four-hour substation, or have these objective coming out of here?
Yes, there would be a car coming out each shift.
You can shift the twenty-four hours?
Yes. Our shifts are three shifts, eight to four, twelve in the night.
Is that a single officer per shift? I'm sorry, a single officer per shift?
Yes.
Okay. And I also just wanted to send really happy there are so many people here. I'm really afraid there'd be like five people, and I'm very glad that people are interested in doing this.
I'm also delighted, because when I first walked in here, there was about four people, and I said, "Uh-oh, where is everybody then?" Glad you all came out, that's important.
So I would just like to mention, I think this is important, this is for the village. So we all know currently, or I hope we all know, currently the town contracts with the village for police services. This particular presentation and what we're working on is for village services. The town will have to decide contract after that, right? We are going to open it up to questions specifically to the sheriffs, if anyone has questions. I'd like to keep it to village residents or village business owners only. If you have questions for the town and how the town is going to handle their contractual services, they have a meeting on April fourteenth. Questions?
So I have a question that is really to clarify an understanding that I have. Currently with the Milton Police Department, if anything unthinkable were to happen and exposed a great liability, that liability would fall on the village regardless of whether the incident was in the town or the village?
Correct, currently.
And were we to contract with the Sheriff's Department, we would absolve ourselves from liability as a municipality? That all that liability would shift to the Sheriff's Department in the county?
Yes, it's standard for all contracts that we have with municipalities, that the county will take on the liability.
Yeah, thank you. That was my understanding. It's a weight on the idea of having a local police department, and the idea of shifting that weight off of our shoulders is attractive to me.
Remember, we're the, for those of you that don't know, we are the smallest village in the county and one of very few that still has a police department. And to me, one of the biggest issues is the liability that falls back on the village. Granted, we do have insurance, but when we go over those limits in a lawsuit, that falls back on the village. We still have to pay for it.
Could you describe a little bit more about those liabilities? Like what examples of what that might be that the village would be burdened with?
Do you want to take that from what?
It could be anywhere from an auto accident where the deputy sheriff or police officer was found at fault for that auto accident, or an excessive use of force situation, or an arrest situation that maybe was an unlawful arrest, or things like that.
My question is, so when the deputy sheriffs are here, even when they're here on dedicated time for the village, they're supervised by the Sheriff's Department, right? So that takes that issue of the village board needing to supervise them, that no longer is their responsibility? If they're allocated hours for the village, they're supervised by the Sheriff's Department, right?
Yes, correct. So when you had one contracted out with the deputy sheriff, also you also get supervision with that. So you have, we have a lieutenant and two sergeants assigned to each shift. So you always have a supervisor on that shift that will supervise that individual, make sure that the checklist is abided by, make sure that radio checks are done or through the mobile data terminal, the computers in the cars. So people are checking in on a regular basis, monitored and supervised.
Follow-up question?
Yeah.
So should somebody have an issue, is no longer the responsibility of burdening the village board to address it? That issue would go directly to the Sheriff's Department?
Correct. And as I said, when you come in contact with the deputy sheriff, they'll give you their business card with their name on it, and then either someplace that if they have an issue, they can call or email us, call us, send a message to us about a thing that they may have, or a compliment.
Or a compliment, yes.
I have a further follow-up. I'm sorry. So the idea of sort of relinquishing the day-to-day supervision is an attractive release for the village board. But again, I want to clarify the idea that this checklist is, and sort of the guidelines of how the contract policing time is used, is something that's done in collaboration with the village board. So although they are not having to do this sort of administrative supervision, we're not forfeiting how we are policed as a community. We still have a voice in that.
Correct. So you come up with that checklist. You have different things that you think are areas of concerns that you would like to see, some enforcement that you would like to see. You tell us what you want, and what we do. We are always going to patrol, we're always going to enforce the vehicle and traffic laws. We have to uphold the Constitution of the state of New York and the United States, so we're always going to do that. That's given, but additional things that are areas of concerns to the residents of the Village of Milton and the board and all the rest of it. Thank you.
There is one more question, and this might be more for the board than necessarily for the sheriff. But what would be the cost differential between keeping our current force, which I know is a very, you know, it's not the highest one item in our budget, versus setting up this substation?
It's a little different. I'd welcome you, I can talk to you after about it. And it's not that I'm not trying to keep it all transparent, but there's a lot of numbers and there's a lot of things to go through. But I'm happy to sit down with you and.
Is there like a big difference, or?
It all depends, right? It depends on the amount of hours that we contract with the Sheriff's Department for specific village coverage. So currently, right, we have our police department that covers not only the village, but also covers the town. And it's split in two different costs. The town pays us some money for it, the village takes the majority of the cost and takes all of the liability. If we contracted with them for a specific set hours for an additional officer just in the village, depending upon the amount of hours that we contract for per week, is the cost. And those hours, which we've discussed before, those hours can be kind of manipulated and switched and changed on a week basis, monthly basis, daily basis. If we decide that something's coming up, there's the food truck festival's coming up in the village, and we want a couple of extra patrols that day, similar to what our own police department does now. When we need extra patrols because there's an event in town, they get officers to go on duty. It's the same kind of thing. All right, I'm getting, not you yet, while you're up.
Thanks. So do I understand, are we not currently actually paying directly to sheriffs? It just comes out of our taxes? Is that how they're?
Currently, yes. We're not contracted with the Dutchess County sheriffs. The only police department we have is our own local police department.
But there is a backup presently that just out of our taxes?
There's one officer that is in our zone currently. Peter?
I assume that it's safe to think that you're familiar with the area and the locally located members of your force that discuss this with you. What are the major concerns for law enforcement in this area, in this town? What are the major things?
Well, your liaison would be starting to skate air from this here, so.
Yeah, I would say, you know, the biggest issue here in other words, obviously, you want to leave out the strong drug issue here. Your vehicle traffic and. want to leave, you want to strong drug issue here, your vehicle traffic and because you're secluded here, you know, there's, there's, you know, theft, a lot of theft here. It's easy to deal with from here to Connecticut and we work with state police, saw them leaving, where things going back and forth, but if you grab something and it's within the bungalow or back there right behind, same line car wash, that's where we found a bunch of stuff, but you gotta think, you know, it's easy to move stuff there. You know, we have two different states that we border basically and another county. So that would take that, the droves are probably our biggest issues here.
To the sheriff's department, can you talk a little bit about, can you talk a little bit about the transparency policies that you have and use of force policies?
Yes, with our police modernization reform plan, you can go online and you can see all about our police modernization reform plan and about the transparency that we have with police force. In that, in our police modernization reform plan, you'll see our use of force policy. You will also see that you can have, as I said earlier, if, if there is an instance where you think there's an excessive use of force, you can notify our internal affairs bureau. Each incident is investigated thoroughly and you're reported back to whether the investigation is founded or undone.
And how easy it is to access some of the information that a community member's looking for?
Very easy. You can go right onto our website, which is dutchessny.gov/government/sheriff. Okay?
I have a question about training.
Yeah.
Can you just speak to us about the training you do and how often and the qualifications that?
So training, training's paramount. Being an accredited agency, we have to have monthly in-service trainings, so we do two hours each month continuous education for all of our staff. And then we do firearms training each and every month as well. And that's a two-hour time period. We have a use of force that's continually done each and every year. There's a certain set of criteria that you have to meet where you have to have certain trainings each and every year. Use of force is the first one that we do every year as a refresher in January. And as I said, we do firearms training each and every month. Then we work and we do trainings available with all of the local law enforcement agencies. We'll do active shooter training. We'll do some other specialty units and training with that because we have a swiftwater rescue team, an ATP patrol unit, a bike patrol unit, a motorcycle unit, as well as drones, which is what is the form of?
How UAS?
UAS, unmanned aerial, aerial.
That sounds good.
Drone, drone operator. So, you know, we do all that, that training as well. Yes, we have to do continuous education twenty-four hours a year for each and every day, two hours a month.
Could you tell us a little bit, by way of construction really, what the relationship you have, sheriff's office has with the state troopers? Is there overlap or you, you work in separate?
You know, I worked out here for, when I began my career thirty years ago, I worked out here for a couple of years. And all the local agencies, from the village of Millerton PD to the state troopers, we all rely on each other each and every day. We work well with one another, we share information with one another. That's how we're able to solve these crimes like Sergeant Hare was referring to with all these burglaries. It's the state police, the sheriff's office, village of Millerton PD, working together, sharing information, yeah, I know where that person is, yeah, this is probably what's going on. So they're in constant communication and share information with each other. You know, it hasn't changed much with your backup. I, I remember I was telling the story of driving out here Sunday, an old farm on twenty-two in northeast and I was a rookie cop and rookie deputy sent to a domestic and I was driving right by it, so I said, okay, be advised, I'm out. They're like, be advised, your backup's twenty minutes away. And that's the world we live in. So, you know, the old mantra, one riot, one deputy, right Dave, back in the good old days? We definitely, hopefully rely on, on each other and that's why we have to communicate with each other each and every day.
Would I be correct in assuming, and she's bringing up the budget part, excuse me, if you go with the sheriffs, you also don't have the expense of the vehicles, the maintenance, the liability insurance, that that is also a big bottom line in, at the end of this that you don't have?
We wouldn't, the village wouldn't have to take that on at all, whether it's the vehicles and whether the sheriff's department would take over the vehicles. If the equipment that we currently have, if that works for them, that's great, they can take that on too. Everything else could be surplus and, and sold at auction, but we wouldn't have, we would still have general liability coverage for the village, but we wouldn't have the special police liability coverage that we currently do have. That would be taken off the table as well.
Could you explain how you will be, will you be reporting to the village board about what you're seeing in terms of law enforcement and crime and safety or will, how, how will that work?
How it works is we assign a liaison from the sheriff's office to the village of Millerton and that will be Sergeant Steve Hare because he's connected with the community, has a thumb on the pulse of the community. And he could give a monthly report, a bi-weekly report, it's all how you want that reported back. What we normally do is our liaison with each municipality meets with the, the village board, the town supervisor on a monthly basis just to update them as to what the activity is, what we run into, give them an activity report as to what crimes were committed or what crimes were investigated, traffic, if any tickets were issued, parking tickets, vehicle and traffic tickets, domestic violence related calls.
Yeah, with the village approval of the marijuana dispensary in the lounge, is there any planning done in advance or any problems that might arise? I know we're not there yet, but.
If we've discussed this issue as, as, you know, it's, it's a new age and coming up and, you know, you would treat that the same way as you would treat any type of local establishment that serves alcohol, because you can be arrested for operating a motor vehicle under the influence of marijuana. So we, you know, you treat all those situations as similar and such.
We, the board can put together a checklist and we can agree about what we're all going to work on together. If something should happen and just for some reason, if something goes, let's just say something goes pear-shaped and, and the village or the, and the village board is not happy with the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department about a certain issue, what, what is the process of how we would talk about that and how, how do we, because we know how it works with the militant police department?
So you bring that issue up with, with the liaison?
Yeah.
And then they would bring that to our attention, who would be administrative staff or who would be the captain of patrol, John Waters, Chief Deputy Mark and myself, sit down and talk to it, with the liaison come out, sit down and talk to you as a board and see what we can do to stop those issues.
Okay, thanks.
In addition to just kind of policing over, kind of reacting to calls and policing certain areas, do you also, if you use your services, do any kind of preventative things? Like how drugs are a big problem in this area, like have drug programs, things like that? Is that something you'd ever present to the village of, hey, you've noticed a lot of this, we think maybe we should implement this or vice versa? If you're giving us a report and we say this is really, you know, this number's really high, is there something you can do about it to prevent it? Is that something you'd also do in your services?
Absolutely, because we developed a community policing unit as well. So the, the data and input we would get from our patrols and look into it, the target areas and the liaison would come back to us and say, look, this is what we need to focus on, this is what we need to do. And then because of sheriff's office and we have a dedicated community policing unit, crime prevention unit, we would come out and offer different courses, different things like that to the public as well as, you know, well, we have members assigned to the Dutchess County Drug Task Force. So if there was a specific drug issue, we have four members from the sheriff's office that's assigned to that with other members from local law enforcement agencies, which is Hyde Park, East Fishville, Town of Poughkeepsie, City of Poughkeepsie and City of Beacon. So they travel throughout the county working on drug cases. So then we would, with that, we can notify our drug task force and have them work in a series.
Sam?
Yes. Do you have a relation, a working relationship with the Department of Behavioral Health that could interact with some of the issues having to do with mental illness out here?
Absolutely, and what we're working on, part of our community policing unit is what we're working on with, with Dutchess County Department of Behavioral Health. We, we have the crisis stabilization center, right? And then we have the mobile crisis team that we work with closely. But, well, one of the units I want to develop well in next year, if I'm still around and I get elected, next year, working on that is having a, a response team where it's a deputy sheriff and a mental health worker and a mental health counselor responding to calls as well as a social worker. Because when a police officer responds to a call with a person in crisis, that uniform is a wall to that individual. So the idea, the premise is the police officer, deputy sheriff responds with his team, they secure the scene, make sure it's safe, and then we get that person the services they need immediately, whether it's a mental health counselor or a crisis intervention. A note, all our deputy sheriffs are trained in crisis intervention training, which is an eight-hour block of, of training as well as a forty-hour block, which sixty percent of our staff is trained in the forty-hour block of crisis intervention training, which we will do continuous education in classes this year, get more and more trained. When you attend, we also induct the Dutchess County Zone Fourteen Law Enforcement Academy. So we have police officers from Columbia County, Dutchess County, Oldsby County, Potomac County, attend our police academy, which is twenty-six weeks. And every officer has the forty-hour crisis intervention training in that. Any new deputy sheriff or police officer has that training.
Did you say that there is, that there currently is a crisis unit?
Yes.
And what kinds of things do they handle?
They come out, like if we're dealing with somebody that's in crisis and doesn't, or may need the criteria to be remanded to a mental health unit in, in a hospital, so that mobile crisis team will come out and help us make that assessment and then get the paperwork developed so we can adjudicate that person to get the help.
Okay. And then with the mobile crisis unit as it, as it exists now, who, who staffs that?
Mental Health America.
And, and I'm, so it would, there would be, I assume, somebody from the Dutchess County Sheriff's Office and then someone from Mental Health America?
Correct.
Peter?
Could you talk to us about the capabilities and the partners to deal with people that are non-British English speakers or non-English speakers, primarily Latin Americans, just Northeastern, Dutchess County, increasing population of immigrants?
Yes, so we have what, just.
No, so we have a couple on each shift that are bound for, we also have a language line, which is an option to us, which basically call in and any language they can translate for us. Luckily, we all have cell phones. Certain people on our shifts, like I said, speak Spanish speaking will come out. If not, anybody that will come out, basically they have the capability of using a cell phone to basically put on a speakerphone and translate for it, but the language lines are huge, they can go up for us.
What about the interface for immigration of authorities and is there a concern?
To be honest, in my point, I've worked with among two different companies, even one time it's rare.
So it's not much, you're already thought about it.
They're not, they're not up in this area of.
I mostly want to ask the board this question, but in terms of personal safety, living in the town of Millerton, Village of Millerton, my biggest concern would be a violent crime. And I do read all the reports that we can get our hands on that are presented by the board leader. And I noticed that a lot of times when, when the Millerton Police Department is called, Dutchess County is also called for the bigger crimes, of which I've seen very few. And my concern would be for our community, young people, vulnerable people, people who maybe have a tail laid out, use drugs because life is hard, things that are more poverty related, that may then have a, an effect if you get pulled over by the police, by the county sheriff. It could have a negative impact on their life as opposed to having someone here to protect us if something really horrendous happens, like happened in the state a few weeks ago. Again, it was the sheriff's office that responded. So since we already receive some services from you when big things go down, I'm wondering at the cost for our community, sort of socially, how will that be to have more of a police presence here when people are struggling? And I'm personally not sure if it's helpful to have young people already interacting with law enforcement when that could really affect their future life. That's it. So it's just a more of a consideration for us as we look forward. We've got our police department now and again, violent crimes happen, usually it's the state troopers or the Dutchess County sheriff that come anyway. So should we be paying for sort of more surveillance, more police presence?
Well, I mean, we can, we can clear the checklist, so we can ask them to do certain things, like I was thinking about like the rail trail, you have a bike, you can set people on the rail trail bikes, right? Like, and do community outreach, right, with the helmets and the cars, which we do now. So there's, I think there's, there's a sense of community as well with the sheriffs because we have so many that live in this area and they're actually familiar with the area and the people, they live here too. So I think.
There's a power differential, I mean.
No, I understand your point, maybe your concern, but as I stated earlier, when I began the presentation, we don't care how many people we arrest, we don't care to get you ready, we care about how many people we kill. We're all about building relationships. We're a county wide agency, we have county resources at our fingertips, which can get you to people those services a little quicker than, than others because we're a county wide agency and, you know, we're a very community-based oriented law enforcement agency. We're, we're known as the light professional courteous law enforcement agency.
So one more thing, so since you're already looking after us, and I think that's great, and I, and I think it's, everything you're saying sounds wonderful, but if you're already looking after us as a community, what are we as a village asking you to do extra that the Millerton Police doesn't do or if we had or didn't have the Millerton Police?
Take the liability off the village. That's really, in the end, that's what a contract with them would provide. It would be the exact, it would be just about the exact same coverage, different times, they would have a substation here, zero liability to the village. There will never be, if we are contracted with the Dutchess County sheriff, there will never be a lawsuit against the village or who that had, dealing with the police department.
But the Dutchess County sheriff would be twenty-four hours a day, now we have part-time, right?
They would, they, we wouldn't be paying for, they're in our zone anyway.
Yeah.
Right? We would be, we would be supplementing that zone coverage with individual village coverage for a set number of hours per day.
Got it.
Similar to what we have now.
Thank you.
But there would be a substation, there would be a substation here, but there will be sheriffs in and out, but not necessarily on duty here, but there will always be a presence, which I think people were concerned about, that there is a presence, right? I mean, I, I know what you're saying, absolutely. So this would allow us to, to have them available to us right in the village.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Ani.
Kristine?
I have a question, I mean, do you have records going back on calls from the village? Do you have any sense of what hours is most important to me have a presence here and respond quickly?
We have the, the data where we could do that and do a query and, and I don't have it at my fingertips right now, but I could get that on the show.
For the board, I heard Wapinjus and Pauling, they're for using the sheriffs. Have you spoken to those contractors to see how this is working, what works, what doesn't work?
To Pauling, yes, I have.
Oh.
And they're, they're very happy with the service and the coverage that they have.
Wapinjus is a little bigger, right?
Wapinjus is a little bigger. Pauling, Pauling is not quite the next closest size to us up, but they're pretty close.
Our contracted services with Pauling have been for the last twenty-seven years. Our contracted services with Pauling have been for the last 27 years. And then, with the Village of Wap vendors, I would say this has to be for the last 35, 40 years. So, they've always contracted additional services with the sheriffs.
David?
Sheriff?
Yes?
I'm well acquainted with you. Good evening, thank you for coming.
Dave taught me how to maroon, how to maroon, Jesse. Thank you.
No practice. Can you speak to how much the contract is approximately for the Village of Pauling and how many hours a day or a week would that cover?
The Village of Pauling spends about $190,000 a year for police services, and they have eight hours a day, seven days a week. Plus, that $190 also includes additional patrols that they may have during the, this is the summer months, and they want us to patrol the Lakeside Park or something like that, and during the holiday season when people are shopping, et cetera. And then, on the weekends for parking enforcement because some people like to double park on Charles Holman Boulevard, which to go into McKinney and Doyle and grab a bagel, so we have to move people.
If the village contracted the sheriff's office for the same number of hours for patrol, have you done those numbers yet? I think...
We don't even have you guys on for that many hours.
Okay. So...
And we're talking, also talking village and town.
Is, is there an additional charge when, when a deputy salary is paid for, if, we'll say a detail or you contract it out, is there, is there a cost for using a car as well?
There is a cost, but Village of Millerton already has equipment, so like the Town of Wap vendors provides the vehicle, so you don't get charged for that vehicle.
Who would, who would the liability go on if there was a crash?
In the agreement, the liability still goes on the county.
And they can put the Millerton Police Department to patrol by Dutchess County Sheriff on cars too.
Though, you know, like the Town of Wap vendors, how they do it there?
In terms of the substation, would that be something that we would incur the cost of setting up and, like, approximately how long would that take to get it up and running?
Well, it would be where our police department is now in the Village Hall, 5933, we're in on them.
Did that answer your question? Was your question, how long would it be to do a changeover?
It sounds like in Jen's answer that it, we would already sort of have it up and standing and ready to go, so there wouldn't be any additional cost or time factor.
One more.
One more.
Is this, in my opinion, this is a pretty important decision for both the town and the village. Is this going to be subject to vote by all of the people in the village?
You know, the board has not fully decided how to go. If, how this goes moving forward, we would have to introduce a local law, which is subject to permissive referendum, if that's the way the board decides to move forward.
Can you stay in the library on that, right on left of the library?
So, we would introduce a local law to dissolve the police department if we are going to contract with the Dutchess County Sheriff. That contract is contingent upon whether or not the local law moves forward. Permissive referendum allows for a petition to be circulated. If enough signatures on the petition of registered village voters is obtained, then it automatically goes to the ballot in June, because that's our next election, is June.
Could the village slash town have a constable for the court system, separate from the sheriff's department?
I'm going to leave that question up to the town. If that was one thing that was brought to us was a couple, currently, the village does provide an officer in the court. We could certainly work in that contract that those could be maybe split between the village and the town, where the village would make sure that we had specific hours for the court for that.
So, this may not, it's probably a question for you, I'd be questioning for Chris. If the village were to decide not to dissolve the police force in contrast with the sheriff's office, I take it that the town, however, could act independently and contract with the sheriff's office and stop availing itself of the village police force. These are two independent...
I think that's probably a question for the town, but in theory, yes.
I wasn't suggesting that it was...
In theory, in theory, our contract expires May 31st. So, in theory, the town could decide, no matter what happens in our little circus, that they want to contract directly with the Dutchess County Sheriff's Department.
Thanks.
Anyone else?
How long have we had a police department in Millerton?
As long as I can remember, as long as I've been alive. So, that's close to 50 years. I said close, probably longer.
Are you auctioning it off?
Just to figure longer than, because he goes by, the county, the whole policeman when they want to, law enforcement, so probably...
That's not... She says longer than 16 years.
Couple hundred years.
And I think, and I think one of the things, remember originally when the police department, you know, back in the day, I mean, Millerton was, Millerton had a lot of ours. Millerton was known for a lot of scuffles, a lot of fights, a lot of stuff going on. And I think that was one of the reasons to have that kind of police presence. I mean, currently, they're, they're few and far between in the village, but there's still, as Officer Heer mentioned, there's still plenty of issues around here. I'm going to go, three more questions and that's it. Debbie, do you have any more? I just wanted to ask.
No, no, I'm good.
Just wanted to... Do you know?
So, to the sheriff, decide policing and preventative work, they've got to, any other support they provide, for example, for the minority community?
We have a community outreach group, part of our community policing unit, so with our community policing unit, yes, we do outreach with the minorities and different communities, different issues that they may have. You can, you can come with us and we have programs to help educate the public and address those issues.
Eric, in the back.
Excuse me. I'm curious, does the sheriff's department have an internal system of rewards whereby for any particular officer and the number of stops that they may, for the number of whatever, they may get some reward at the end?
Again, I don't care how many tickets you write, people you arrest, I care about people you know. So, there's, there's no pool of system, there's, there's no awards for any type of tickets or arrests.
Okay, one more, anyone? Any takers?
So, I'm just wondering, can you, can you speak to the, to the racial and gender diversity within your force? Is it fairly well-balanced or is it something you're working on?
Well, with, we had our recruitment team, that we did a recruitment effort for a more diverse workforce, we did outstanding job, we did recruitment efforts throughout the county, we recruited 58 different individuals. What was nice is we have a part-time police force, a part-time squad as well for our deputy sheriffs. So, what was nice is we could recruit people of a more diverse background, didn't necessarily have to take tests or be on a list to hire them. So, we afforded nine individuals that came from diverse backgrounds for this next academy class, and we did an outstanding job with that. With our law enforcement recruitment effort last year, we had 1,380 people apply to take the exam, which was a 57% increase. Add to those, 119 were African-American, and that was up from 58 in 2017, so that was 105% increase. Our Hispanic population, 249 registered to take the test for 2021 compared to 82 in 2017, that's a 203% increase. And then, Asian applicants, 17 in 2021 did not compared to 9 in 2017, 89% increase. And then, we had a 98% increase in female applicants, 218 in 2021 to, compared to 110. So, we hired two full-time deputy sheriffs, one was a Multimodal, one was Caucasian. We hired seven part-time deputy sheriffs, two were African-American males, two Caucasian males, one African-American female, one Hispanic female and one Hispanic male. We did such a great job that these individuals took the test, they scored well on their civil service exam to be on a town preferred or city preferred list. So, they ended up on the City of Poughkeepsie preferred list, and they scored 85 or 80s. We, because we're a county list, we have to start with the 100s before we can get to them. So, we train them, the deputy sheriffs, the part-time deputy sheriffs, we train just like full-time deputy sheriffs, have their certifications, and two of them are going to be hired by the City of Poughkeepsie within the next, well, once hired, April 7th, he starts April 7th, and then, a female deputy sheriff that's African-American, she, she'll probably be hired many full-time with the City of Poughkeepsie. So, all our hard work went to the City of Poughkeepsie. But we do continuous recruiting because we'll have another academy this mid-June, where we just re, our recruitment effort, we're going out and recruiting individuals to have more of our strong pull. So, we're striving to get better every day.
Well, with that, I would like to thank all of you that came out. I'd like to thank you all for coming to present to us and, if nothing further, I would like to call this meeting to an end at 7:10 PM. Is there a second?
I will second that.
All is good, David, fine. Thank you all.